Okay, alright. Our June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five regular town council meeting at six o'clock. Roll call please. President?
President.
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 Thank you very much. Please join us for prayer and then follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we just beg your presence here. We just ask you to just know in our world right now, Lord, and just show us the way forward and just ask your grace and knowledge on our leaders that they would do the right things. And Lord, just thank you for our state, for our town. Just thank you for everybody that works here. Just thank you for this council and just thank you for leading us in your way, just to have your hand on in everything that we do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Okay, a motion to amend or adopt the agenda is presented. A motion by Scott, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Matt, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay, motion approved. Approval of amendments submitted by the court treasurer also noted upon our website.
So moved.
A motion by Matt, a second.
Second.
Second by Randy, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay, motion approved. Approval of allowance claims also submitted by the court treasurer also noted upon our website. Got a motion by Scott, a second.
I'll second.
Second by Matt, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay, motion approved. We'll take a moment to sign those documents.
Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. No comments from our public on our gin and items, I have no things right here, so we'll go straight to our ordinances, resolutions. Our first ordinance is ordinance two zero two-five dash O R dash zero one three, an ordinance adopting additional parking standards in the town of Sellersburg, codification of ordinances. So I think we discussed this before. Charlie, you have some more you want to add to it?
Yeah, so this came up, obviously, I know we all heard from several residents over in the Atkins Court neighborhood, recently I heard some information from some residents on Sharp's Lane, several of them are here in attendance. Street parking. So obviously, there's some area over by the park, Atkins Court, where there's an, we would call an excessive amount of street parking, and I say excessive because we run into issues where while driveways aren't necessarily blocked, they're not taking into account the road width. People can't access and get in and out of their driveways because there's not enough radius space, and then we had a similar issue kind of start developing over on Sharp's Lane. So it came up with just thinking through this thing, obviously, if you can't get a car through there very well, you're obviously not going to be able to get a fire truck through there very well, or an ambulance. So what this amendment does, while street parking would still be legal, if people are parked on the streets, they cannot limit the width of the roadway down to less than twelve feet. And this is a conversation I have with Chief Wayland as well, and I welcome him to have any comments, but I think this would allow the opportunity for the police to have something to go back on in the event that that happens, and a lot of times, basically, it's a public street unless it's denoted no parking. As long as you're a licensed vehicle, you can park on any public street, no matter where it is. However, there are some circumstances in town because of width of our roads that's just not feasible, but also making it a no parking street won't work either because in some cases, for example, Atkins Court neighborhood, some of these people only have a driveway that's big enough for one vehicle. So they have to park on the street, kind of the situation. So making it a no street parking really, really doesn't work, so. Chief has nothing else to add.
I think, you know, it's, you know, it's a sign of growth, you know, more family members, you know, like I said, when I, I said, the Dixons lived on Sharp's Lane, I was over there a lot as a kid. So, you know, I know it was, just seemed like it was just a long driveway, unfortunately, and everybody now has larger families or friends, you know, that don't understand, and or they don't want to be blocked in the driveway. So I completely understand the aggravation that you all may have, so I guess before I do this, did any of you all residents have anything to say this evening, the council? Okay, okay, alright.
I got a comment, Brad, before we go further.
Sure.
Is it, is a possibility, I mean, I've really been, I'm familiar with Atkins Court, and I used to have a friend that lived on Sharp's Glen, used to live over there. Is it, is a possibility that you could have just one side parking only? Is that feasible? It's not wide enough even for that.
Yeah, and again, I think it comes, and then it becomes, again, an enforcement type thing. So I think this runs down to situations which, you know, again, the residents of Sharp's had some situations where, you know, I think last week it was a movie truck, you know, they had a movie truck that was parked out there, and you couldn't get a vehicle around the movie truck unless you drove up in somebody's yard, kind of a thing. So I mean, I think it's just kind of a special situation. There are some roads that realistically you could park on both sides of the street in normal circumstances, but again, if there's a, if there's a party, or if there's a, again, whatever, whatever might go on, you know, where you do get quite a bit of traffic, then stacking on the roadway regardless of the side, it narrows that road width down where it's hard to navigate, again, from an emergency response perspective, you basically would not have an emergency response, you can't get through.
So what, I have two questions. One is, so basically, what you're telling me is if you're entering Sharp's and there's a car coming out, you can't get past each other, is that?
You can normally on Sharp's, but there are areas of Sharp's Lane, because it was built, that if you have, and I don't, again, I don't think this is a typical resident, I defer to them from what, you know, I've had a conversation with them about, it's not, it's not a standard, standard problem.
Right.
But it has crept where, you know, they have people, you're having an event at your, at your property, you have a decent driveway, but people aren't parking in the driveway or in the yard as part of your event, and you're trying to stuff everybody on the street, well now the road itself is only about ten feet wide in places.
Okay.
So now you've got people parked on the street, and you legitimately have to almost get, basically, almost our four wheels in somebody's side yard, and then you run into other issues, you've got water meters over there.
Right, right.
Bushes and trees, and, you know, you've got, so again, I think this, you know, in the, in the event that were to happen, and then again, most of our roads, I'm going to say ninety, ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of our roadways are wide enough to have street parking on one or both sides of the street. There are exceptions to that, and I think this addresses the exceptions, and then in those situations, if someone were to say, I can't get in and out of my neighborhood, and the police are called, they've got something to fall back on to enforce it.
So the current ordinance, ordinance doesn't address if this ordinance enforces, so it's like Brad had brought up. So if you have a one car driveway and you own three cars, what do you do with the other cars?
Parking in the street.
Parking in the street. So this ordinance addresses that?
As long as, you can, as long as you are not wide, as long as you are not narrowing the road to less than twelve feet.
Did you just say this, the road was ten feet wide?
Yes, in that, in that situation.
Okay.
Where they're, and you're being very specific to Sharp's Lane.
Right.
Their driveways, they have enough adequate parking, every house on Sharp's
Okay.
Has adequate parking for multiple cars.
Okay.
There are other neighborhoods that don't, so they have to park on the street, which isn't typically a problem.
Okay.
Until there's some type of special event where you're getting.
Emergency vehicles.
There you go.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand it, you know, what we're doing here, exactly. Okay, thank you.
So will we, like, have some posted signs that we are going to locate on the street to make the?
I had planned on it, we can.
I think probably might not be a bad idea to at least have something posted, just for, you know, to serve our purposes, and stayed on there that based upon this ordinance and, and everything where they can go back and look and see, I think that might not be a bad idea as far as try to, to start that practice. So.
I'll go, sorry, Brad.
Go on, go on, no. Go on, I'm done.
So Charlie?
Yes.
Who is going to measure whether you're in violation of twelve feet?
I don't know, I take it that would probably be the officer responding, but it, it shouldn't be. And I understand that we have parking issues, but this is, and maybe not specific to the town of Sellersburg, but in other areas, I mean, I, apparently, you know, common sense has to come into play. The fire truck has to be able to get down the street, all these cars, we have to respond to residences, but if we're, I don't want to ask police officers to get out with a tape measure and have to measure this off when someone's in violation, so I would hope that it's consistently enforced throughout the town, but, I mean, and putting signs up all over, I mean, it's, it's, how many houses are affected with this ordinance on Sharp's?
Nine or?
Twelve. Twelve houses on both sides, so six on each side, basically? So, I mean, I would assume that, you know, without having to call the police for every single little thing all the time, and then get them out with this measuring stick to measure the roadway, I mean, how often do we go down there for parking complaints? Is it just during Little League season? I mean, has that been resolved, the Little League season stuff? The Little League season has not been resolved. So that's still going on? So now I understand. I guess, is the season over? I don't know, I don't know, I think there's still travel vehicles over there. I understand the neighbors' frustration, I understand the community's frustration when they, they can't, you know, when someone, you have an elderly person that gets concerned when they see three or four cars parked in the street, and they can't, a fire, Amir can't get a fire truck down there. I mean, if this is the best solution, then I, I hope that's enforced equally and is enforced consistently, you know, on a regular basis, and maybe that's the only way, and then we say, hey, well, listen, you're going to have to park at a community park and walk to my house if I have an event, because there's no street park, I mean, we have to educate those folks as to say, just because you've been here for twenty years, we're going to enforce the rule for you just as we would for anybody else. I think that's only fair. But to talk about the little, the park situation, there are, there are resident signs posted over there, there are certain areas that do say no parking in front of the gate, we paid a couple of calls about that. Chief had officer take one of our electronic reader boards over there for the last month, and still. Still going on? Again, and that's when this Sharp's Lane conversation came about, I was actually talking to the responding officer about it, and he brought up, I mean, you know, I could get through barely, but if there was a fire back there, like, you're not getting. Yeah, we can't have that. So that's why I got thinking, like, okay. Thinking of other parts of town that maybe we'd not had an issue with, where the roads are a little bit narrow, some of these older neighborhoods or other parts of town, what could be a solution from a, from an ordinance perspective? And that's where this came up with this, and originally I had it drafted a little bit different, after talking with Jake, we kind of tweaked it a little bit to be more specific, because then the question is, okay, where are you going to measure it from, from where to where? Right? You know, you're going through, it's twelve feet, it's a twelve feet, one inch from tire to tire, you know, or is now it's a mirror, a mirror? Or is it, a fire truck can't get through there? Okay, well, how do you know a fire truck can't get through there?
Is it from the curb, twelve feet up?
No, it's the travel path, right? So you park on both sides of the road, the travel path roadway cannot be narrowed than twelve feet with cars parked on both sides, or parked both on one side, so from the mirror to curb, then the road can't be narrowed.
I don't have any, any streets that small or not.
No, you don't.
So I asked this question earlier, if in the road, I guess, is a little underbuilt is, and not that in its, a road that's maintained by the town, is that correct? Without widening the road, but what I'm trying to picture in my mind, if you, if two cars can pass each other, is that, is that, is that correct? Two, ladies shake their head, if they can't, they can't pass each other, one's coming and one's coming in. So not in every piece of the road?
It's more narrow.
Okay. So it's one lane? Okay, basically, that's, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah, Sharp's Lane has double access entry, but as you go back, it's consistently narrow.
Is there curbs there?
No.
Or is this asphalt where it meets the grass?
Right.
Probably will have a lot of speeding complaints down there to the road somehow.
I'm just thinking if it's a narrow, if it's a normal sized road, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a factor, you know, if all the, if cars were parked on one side, you know, but there's not room for that, basically, okay?
Well, again, I go back to another issue that we had on, erring or maybe a year ago, maybe two years ago, where there's concern about the width of the road, like the school bus coming through, you had somebody parking on curb, out from the curb, and then you had somebody parking on the other side, and they had a bigger vehicle, and the school bus couldn't get through, and whatever. So again, this, this addresses those situations. No, I think it was erring or, I think. So again, the, those type of issues is like, well, they're legally parked, it's a public road, there's not enough parking, and they're parked up where it is, road's narrow, I think this just adds an additional stance, okay, it just can't be narrow, narrower, narrower than twelve feet.
So my question, so the follow-up with that is, if the officer or the enforcer, whether it's code enforcement officer, whatever it is, issues a citation into the county ordinance, you just want to write a ticket, please? Want tow car? Thank you. Good.
Vehicle, we talk.
Tow cars, you have to be able to get police down the street, you have to be able, police is a utility here, but fire, EMS have to be able to access all the residences all the time, and if they go down there and write citations and tow cars, so be it, that's what, that's what we're going to vote for. Alright, so I'm going to vote, I'm sorry. Enforce it equally across the board for all the residents, regardless if you've been there for a week, or if you've been there for forty years. And that way, we don't have this thing where the police are picking and choosing, and if the chief didn't run his agency, said his directive as he so pleased, but that would be my advice.
So kind of based off of what Scott's saying is common sense.
Yeah.
But, you know, common sense, I mean, we could sit here, I, I'm all in favor for this, so want to be forefront on that, but, you know, there's other things that we're dealing with too, that people just don't seem to care, you know, parking their trailers out in the road, leaving them unhooked, number one, it's, in my eyes, I'm sorry to say it this way, it's kind of stupid, because, you know, anybody could just back up and hook up and take off of it, but that's not here nor there, but consideration of your neighbors is a huge thing, at least to me, and there's times where that consideration isn't always taken into account by other people.
The penalty states, tow away, police department, members of the fire department or son of the fire prevention bureau authorized to remove or tow away, have removed, tow away any commercial towing service, any car illegally parked, vehicles towed, parking, so I mean, like I said, it's, the intention is because it is an emergency issue of limiting emergency services, there's the ability to address it immediately and not a three-day sticker.
I just, I just want to be a little bit careful here, because I live on Highland in the old part of town, and it's a pretty wide street, so I'm trying to picture the measurements of or the geography, if you have a street and you have a car going west or north, and a car going south, so basically what we're required is twelve feet even on that street in between?
Minimum, yeah, which you would, you would easily have on your, on your street.
Okay.
All, all you have to have is allowance for the one vehicle to go through, that means that the other one allowed to pull to the side until that one vehicle goes through.
Correct.
This, I could see where a commercial vehicle, like the fire truck or something like that, would need twelve feet, a car, pickup truck, with ten feet, not?
Yes, but again, this is addressing emergency vehicle access.
Okay, I get that, but I'm still thinking, I'd really be hard pressed for there to be twelve feet on that road, but I'll talk to you.
What we're going to do is, we're just going to read this ordinance one time.
Okay.
And we'll come back and we'll allow two weeks for everyone that may have some thoughts or concerns, or maybe she's with it to show up at our next meeting, and we can discuss them when we run, does that sound fair enough?
That sounds, that's fair enough.
Everybody can evaluate the area and.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I've heard it now, I'd like to see it now.
Absolutely, and I think that's, I think that's the fairest way to do it. I think this is where something like this does come into effect, where, you know, there are some thoughts, concerns, and maybe we all can kind of talk it out, so it just sits there and states, whereas the code of ordinance of the town of Sellersburg, Indiana requires regular maintenance upkeep, and whereas per recommendation of the town manager, additional parking standards, public roadways are needed within the town of Sellersburg, whereas due to the very width of public roadways, additional limitations are needed in order to, in order to maintain safe access to all partials as it relates to emergency response of police, fire, and EMS. Now therefore, it be ordained by this town council, Sellersburg, Indiana, following language is to be added to chapter seventy-two parking regulations, seventy-two point one two dash street parking. No person shall stop, stand, or park vehicle upon the public streets of the town, we're doing so limits of the road within width to less than twelve feet, which shall be measured from side mirrors or other fur, or other furthest most points from the vehicle or in such a way to prevent a travel path of access of emergency responders. Penalty see seventy-two point nine. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective on its passage prolongation, as evident affirmative signatures are under signed as the majority to elected serving members of this council. So, you know, from my end, I think we just make a motion to approve the first reading, we'll come back to it, see if anyone else has any comments or any thoughts, and, and we all can take a look at it, like I said, I know exactly the issue that they're probably endeavoring, unfortunately, so, but again, I think that would be the best approach. I ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented on the first reading.
Okay, alright. I got a motion from Scott, second from Matt, any final discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay, motion approved. We'll come back to this in two weeks. Okay. Second ordinance, ordinance number two zero two-five dash O R dash zero one four, an ordinance repealing and replacing one-one-zero-point-two-eight of the code of ordinances for the town of Sellersburg, Indiana. We discussed this as well, Charlie, or is this Jake question?
I'm going to defer this to Chief Wayland.
Okay, alright, chief?
Okay. Obviously, I don't know what it was, a while back, we passed, the town passed the ordinance for solicitation within the, within the town. I had to say, back then, I wasn't in favor of that, because I thought I would run into what I'm running into now, which is, people, one, they don't know, and two, when they find out that we have this, that there's a process of fee, that they got to come get a permit, they're not doing it. So the first ordinance basically set out that, hey, if you didn't, you get caught doing this, you know, you're going to get a fine, it's like twenty-five dollars. Here's the issue that I have altogether, is they ain't paying the twenty-five dollars, okay? So I just want to, so this is, this is my opinion of this whole ordinance. So now we're going to raise the fines and fees to two fifty and five, they ain't paying twenty-five, okay? Let me just, I just want to throw that out there, they ain't paying that and they don't care. These people solicit, they're not from around here, they're from, the two I just dealt with, one was from Utah, and one was from Arizona, and they're going to be gone in sixty days. They don't care about this at all. I spent the last two weeks, me and my guys, dealing with solicitors in town, I can't tell you how many manners I have into, into that. Obviously, raising the fines may work or scare some, but I think we have a bigger issue. And the issue is, if there's no teeth to this ordinance, okay, and just because it says two fifty or five hundred, let's, I'm going to be the bad guy, you, you write me the ticket for the most, it's a thousand dollars, and I don't pay it. What are you going to do to it? I'm just being honest, okay? I'm, I'm the real guy, I'm just being honest. I don't pay a thousand dollar thing under this ordinance, and now I'm in Arizona by the time the due date is anyway. What are you going to do to it? All reality, the answer is nothing, okay? Just, I just put it out there, it's just nothing. So I, we spent, I must have had fifteen calls last week alone, for me and my guys chasing solicitors around town, telling them, hey, you got to have permit, you got to have permit. Most of them, we, last week alone, we wrote seven tickets, just so you know, seven tickets last week. These are all after we told them they couldn't do it, they say, okay, they laugh, we leave, and three houses down, they're knocking on the door again. How I know is because the first house they knocked on was mine. We won't get into that conversation, not in this meeting, but you're willing to speak to me afterward if you want. However, three houses down, they go back down, obviously, they're getting the ticket, because I just told them that they couldn't do it. They laugh, don't care, will be gone in thirty or sixty days anyway, see you tomorrow, chief. Okay. You will, but we have better things to do than that. So I guess my, my thing is, yes, let's pass this and let's raise the fines. I'm trying to figure out why, in all reality, someone comes to my house and knocks on my door and wants to sell me a security system. And maybe, again, I can be the bad guy here, why is that a police issue? That, I guess that's for me now, looking at this, why is that a police issue? Shouldn't that not be a homeowner issue to say, listen, I don't want your security thing, thank you for knocking on the door and get out? If I'm wrong, I want you to tell me, but I, I, I don't.
No, you're right, it becomes a police issue when it becomes persistent and they refuse to leave, that's when it becomes a police issue.
And I can handle that.
Not, hey, there's somebody here soliciting a cover bridge and we have no.
Well, that becomes into a trespassing thing, you don't leave, I can lock you up.
So.
Writing a twenty-five, a five hundred dollar ticket that they're not going to pay and are going to be gone in a month, to me, especially after the last two weeks, I just, I think we need to look, thing, I, I get why, you know, some of the people call and say, hey, I got solicitors here, they, they, they look, you know, they look like they're, you know, they don't have a job, or maybe they're trying to rob me, or, or trying to get, if it's someone that's actually trying to do that, they ain't going to come get a permit from me anyway, they're just going to do it. I don't know that this is the answer for us here, obviously, we will continue to do whatever we have to do per the ordinance and the law, but we wasted lots and lots of times the last two weeks, and again, I, I just haven't figured out why, these people are not, the one at my house, he didn't refuse to leave, you know, it's just, I know there's that ordinance, so you don't have a permit, I know this because I'm the one that issues them. But for the everyday person, hey, you want my bug spray, I don't, all right, thank you, and they leave, that's one thing. You know, they refuse to leave, you call us, we can deal with that, because there's some teeth in that, hey, they told you to leave, you didn't leave, now you're going to get trespass, whatever. I just don't know that this is our answer. Again, I'm, I'm fine for whatever you do. Again, I'm, I'm fine for whatever you do. I disagree with that 100%.
Okay, so, um, um, with that, um, do we, we start somewhere and stick with this? Or do we sit there and come and rewrite the book of?
I don't know that there's more teeth we can put in it. I could, me and Jake had this conversation, what, two years ago? We started this, and I told him that then. Because of what this is and the substance of it itself, there's no more teeth he can put into this. There's just not.
From a, from an administrative ordinance standpoint, I really depend upon whether or not the person or people who are not coming doors, you know, after you go to the door and you say you're not interested, they don't leave, persist or anything else, then it becomes a police matter more so than an ordinance violation. You know, this is here just to protect as best you can, putting in those procedures. If there's somebody who is a persistent vendor who's going door to door, they're not really getting licenses, they're not following it, lives in the area or the community, that's something you can enforce. If you live in California or San Francisco or whatever it is, it just gets dropped off, they're in your community for 30 to 60 days and they're leaving, this doesn't do anything for that segment. And, uh, you know, we can't draft anything with more teeth.
And that's what we're dealing with, and that was.
And that's different, and that's not why this was.
Right. And obviously, if any of y'all talked to me last week or the week before, you saw my frustrations because I had no problem enforcing rules and laws. I've done it for 32 years. But if there's no teeth in it, what, I'm wasting my time there yet my guys are wasting their time. And, and I, and I just, I disagree with wasting their time for stuff that in all reality, I don't think's a police issue.
What if, uh, chief and Jake, Charlie, members of the board? And I can understand if you're in an area, uh, and you're gonna do door-to-door sales and you're ignorant of the law, you don't know it. And because I'm the first person, I have a no solicitation sign on my door, it means nothing. They'd be hungover, you know, and I'll tell them, you know, and I'll ask people, you know, really, I'm not interest, interested in your product, or, you know, I've already got it or whatever, but, uh, you know, there is a permit. So, you know, where I'm at with it, since there is no teeth, would it, would it be possible if someone did call the police? Okay, you get a warning, and now they know, they got that warning, it's on your books, it's in their pocket, and the next fine is $1,500.
They paying them.
Right, I get it, I get it, but the, and that's the whole thing, whether it's, uh, $1,500 or $10,000. If they're not paying it, it doesn't matter if it's a dollar. So, this, where we back, it doesn't, if we're back to this, it doesn't matter what amount. So I think we need to come to put our heads together and say, well, if, if the money isn't there and they're not gonna pay it, what's our next level? Where do we go to?
There isn't, that's the thing, there isn't.
I mean, do we, do we, can we become a, a non-soliciting community by state statute?
Not by state statute, you can create your own ordinance, but then it goes back to enforcing whatever fine you will create. So again, for people, people that are locally, much easier to enforce. Those that are just dropped off, it doesn't matter now.
Doesn't matter.
I say it doesn't matter, but in the practical aspect though, then you say, okay, Jake, we gotta send you a court. I go to a certain court, I'm filing it, I put a notice, they don't show up, here's a judgment. You know, you enter it in, and now you're paying, you're earning more money than you're gonna recover. Like, you're probably never recovering to begin with because that person's now out of town. And importantly, which is pretty hard to even give them proper notice because maybe we have to.
So we've addressed it, and we don't have an answer for it. So basically, we can throw this in the trash along with the other one because it's doing no good.
Well.
Is that, that's what I'm hearing.
I would say it's not doing any good. I would say for the segment of the outsiders of the community who were dropped off in the area and they circle whatever municipality or whatever, uh, metropolis area where they're gonna go sell their stuff, and then they're gone, sure, this ordinance does not help. There's nothing you can do.
Right.
Right, it's just, that's kind of something that's out there and you just kind of deal with it as best you can and not really do it. But for the community at large who are going in and they're not coming doors, and maybe that's how they make a living, or, hey, can we, you know, can we clean your gutters? Can we spray on, you know, whatever they're doing to get their business? Then, then yeah, there's some enforcement here because they need to, you know, have that lanyard and everything else.
So if we go back to.
If they have the lanyard, here's the thing, the, the, I won't, I'm gonna say the company because I just, to be honest, it got pissed me off. The vivid guy that came to my house, he had all his appropriate stuff. He had his vivid badge and all that. He was just an ass, okay? Now, unfortunately, he was at the chief's house. Uh, so that didn't go well, okay? But I get what these other, you know, you get a, if that had been my mom there, she's not going to beat me. She can't beat me or, or me. My mom doesn't have a mean bone in her body, so hell, she'd have probably bought vivid. Okay, and that's what we was trying to avoid here.
But at some point, the first answer you go has to add acknowledgement.
You've heard Councilman Boy say all the time, people have to be responsible for their self and their house and their own things. I can't police everybody under that situation.
Sure.
Uh, we had, we've had a few companies that gave, that's came in and did the proper permits. We've had them, and I applaud those, they did the right thing. Uh, but most are not, and not one time have we dealt with any solicitation that's been local, not once. Okay, whether people are not calling on them or, or what. It's always been these bigger companies, uh, most of the time, the company itself is probably based in Louisville or someplace because they're hiring in these people out of, like I said, the guy I just dealt with was Utah and Arizona.
There's nothing you're gonna be able to, from what I've learned in this topic here.
Nothing legally.
So, I've been doing some research here during the, um, discussion. I look at our neighbors to the west of us in Floyd County. Two or more written and verified complaints have been delivered to the Floyd County Commissioners, in all effect, given Salisbury County Councilor, regarding allegedly untruthful, illegal, or harassing conduct concerning vendor or vendors, employees, or agents during his or her door-to-door solicitation. Harassing conduct, which is a misdemeanor. Uh, which would require a police report and a statement from the victim, which would have been you yesterday, chief. I would've came and took.
Last week, not yesterday.
I would, I would've came and took your report.
I appreciate that. I, I, I took care of myself.
I understand that. Um, then it gets into license and revocation. I think the bigger picture here is we're focusing on the minnows and not the big fish. Why don't we direct our town attorney or whoever to issue a $5,000 fine for two verifiable complaints from law enforcement? Get the person's name, which we have a right to do. We're gonna be there with it. Hey, go ahead, buddy, knock on every door you want, because we have two complaints. And now, will we be within our rights to, to pay that fine? They would be responsible here for all court costs, uh, under the penalties. Now, this was signed by the Commissioners in 2024. Does it solve the problem of the door-to-door? No, it doesn't. Now, you come across somebody like me and you, get off my property. You don't wanna get off my property, we're probably gonna have a problem. Then I'm gonna call the police, okay? Some, but my concern is, and always will be for those who can't be.
That is correct.
Leaders of the household, the men, there are some women that will tell you to get off your property and you better go before, I understand that. But let's just, I'm talking about the elderly or those, those that can't, then they require. Now, when that happens, I think that we take the two verifiable complaints or some form of this, we construct it and stop worrying about the minnows, hey, no, no problem, pal. And we start sending these companies the 1,000, $5,000 fines, put it back into something, back in the community. And then every summer, it's gonna continue to happen, they're gonna sell books, they're gonna sell alarm systems. It's not gonna stop, they're gonna leave here, they're gonna go to Charlestown, they're gonna leave Charlestown, they're gonna go to Jeff, and it's just, just what they do. But maybe if we start sending the big fish, the bills, and then, you know, of course, we can tell our officers, listen, we understand, we don't want them wasting time, and we do have to be responsible for our own properties and say, no, I'm not interested. I'm asking you politely to leave. Goodbye, shut the door. If you become persistent, that's harassment. I think the prosecutor would probably get tired of seeing those after a while and say, if it's, if it's harassment and the officer's acting in his or her official duties, arrest them and also support them. Maybe, maybe we need to go that route and get that support from the prosecutor. And I'm not saying that it should come to that, and, but we, we need to rethink this because I don't want anybody laughing in our police officers' faces going, I'm not paying it. I don't want anybody saying, I'm gonna be gone in 30 days and no teeth. Oh, that's fine, whatever, pal, but.
Hope you've got a raw table of this for now and discussing it tonight.
I, I think it needs, it needs more teeth. Maybe the chief, the chief can, uh, or his designee can meet with the prosecutor and say, what rises to the level of harassment? Does a simple statement from a victim or homeowner say, I felt harassed? Because they wouldn't leave, they were persistent, they kept talking, I asked them to leave more than once, they wouldn't leave. Now it's trespassing? And give these officers an articulable reason to arrest someone. And I think the first time that we do that, you go to the box. You may not get held, but come back and try it again, you'll go again. I mean, it, it, that's all I can think of at this point.
Do we have the same issue with, I know we have some, uh, registration for contractors and people that need work. We don't, we don't have issues like this, do we? Most people.
Those are legitimate businesses.
Not that we have, uh, the, the enforcement police out there. I had a plumber come in today, do, do they have to be registered? So, the plumber came to my house, dealt with the, uh, sewer issue. You know, if nobody asks him, you know, uh, do we know that he's registered? We don't know if he's registered. There's no enforcement for it, correct? I mean, there is.
Not from the police.
Not from the police. Uh, you know, I'm just saying, I don't hear about that problem because most of the people request those people to be there, whether they have a permit or not. I don't personally have some, a problem with somebody, I don't know if it's legal, dropping a, an ad in your mailbox. I don't think it's legal. I don't think they can do that. Right.
No, I mean, the history of this was a couple of years ago, post-COVID, we started getting calls down here at Town Hall about door-to-door solicitors, and they wouldn't leave. You would, they would come to your door, selling whatever I'm selling, I'm not interested. They would catch you walking from your car to your house, whatever, whatever. And it became, started becoming more and more frequent. I knew most, several other communities have a door-to-door solicitor's license. I think ours was based off of Jefferson Hills, I believe, or Clarkson Hills originally. Through, through that, during that timeframe, I had a similar situation that the chief had at his house, in my house. I pulled up to the house, dude called me in the driveway, I told him no three times, and he followed me all up to the door. I'm like, dude, can you leave? I don't want, I don't want a security system, I'm good. We got cameras, I'm good. Oh, well, you can just, no. I told him no probably four times from my trap, from my mailbox to my house. Again, you know, some of the concerns that we had from people calling in was, I don't know these people are showing up at my house. I'm standing at the door, I had one show up at my house at 9:30 tonight. I mean, it was consistent, which is where the catalyst of this all came.
I understand that, and I think in that case, you're six foot three, I'm not gonna say your weight, okay?
Two fifty seven.
And at some point, you felt either harassed, someone was loitering on your property, borderline trespassing. Maybe they were intimidating you, and you, you don't know what they're trying to do, maybe trying, just put someone that's not your physical stature, like a smaller, um, homeowner, male or female, that doesn't know how to respond to that. Now, the police cannot coax questions out of you, they cannot coax a statement from you and articulate that for you. However, we can ask cursory questions like, how many times did you ask this guy?
I asked one of you three times.
Did you feel threatened?
I, yeah, I, I kinda did.
Did you feel like you were being intimidated or kind of forced into something? Yes, I did. Well, that rises, I mean, if I come to your house and you're playing loud music and I tell you to turn it down, and you tell me to go pound sand, I've asked you one time to turn it down. The second time I ask you and you refuse to do it, that becomes a deep misdemeanor. Okay? So, I, I think that's the teeth, right? Now, do I want our guys doing that consistently 15 times a day? No, they don't have time for that. We have to stop calling the police, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say this. Every, you, you wonder why people dislike the police is because we get injected into civil things all the time. And then someone on one side doesn't like us being put in the middle, us, because that's my profession, and you don't like the outcome of it, but it's a civil matter, it's not a criminal matter. And then they, all of a sudden, they don't like the police because we didn't serve them. And we have to start taking care of our own properties. But in cases like yours, for the defenseless, for those that, that are not able to take care, or how to react to those type of things, then I think that we should do our due diligence and begin to take people to jail.
And having a permit will not keep someone from doing what you just said.
I, I don't disagree.
They're gonna still be that persistent.
I don't disagree with that, and that's where, if they come through and gone through the permitting process and they do those things, there's provision of where if you do that, it's revoked, whatever, here or there. There was the process, the, the intention of it, that we laid it out and all of that stuff. And again, you know, I think the, the purpose of putting back, yes, it is a civil matter, but also I don't have an enforcement, civil enforcement body that patrols the town of Salisbury 24 hours a day at 8:30 at night when most of these people are going door-to-door. Right? So when those calls come in at 8 o'clock at night, they're gonna get the answering service. And so tomorrow morning, by the time they're gone, there's no, there's no way to catch up with whoever it is and, hey, man, you need to have a permit or you need to whatever. So again, that's where we're kind of stuck at.
I, I think Jake is right. That, I, my opinion is for the board, that you table this, we take another review, we add the maximum amount of strength to it. I think the chief and I, and I, and us are on the same page. Uh, it has to rise to the level of criminal offense. And if it does, then we absolutely, again, I'm not telling the chief how to run his department, but if it was me, I would say if it rises to that, absolutely send the message, take them, take them to jail, they need to. I don't care if they get released in two or three hours, jail's not gonna hold them. Uh, that's, that's correction, that whole different thing, but. And then start sending these large fines with some teeth, with some backing, to these vendors for the verifiable complaints, and then see, see how. But we have to have something in place for the town where our citizens go, what are you doing to protect us? So, there has to be some type of balance. That's just my opinion. Take it forward.
No, I agree, I agree, so. Okay, so let's dig into this a little bit deeper. Let's, uh, show the support and how we deserve to show the chief and the staff and our community, uh, and, uh, we'll come together on something, so. Okay, alright. Um, third item is, uh, Planning Commission Resolution Number two zero two five dash three. Uh, there's a favorable recommendation, recommendation, I'm sorry, to the town council of Salisbury, Indiana, entrance road to the Family Scholar House Development to be named Sue, uh, Epperson, sort.
Elsperman.
Uh, Epperson.
Elsperman.
Elsperman, okay, thank you. Elsperman Way. This was brought in too from the Planning Commission. Commission Ivy Tech is now, uh, started on their new entrance, uh, there where the Scholar House is going into the, uh, there by the state police post, uh, currently, the entrance we'll call it. Uh, and, uh, in, in the desire of Ivy Tech administration and board, uh, of wanting to name this road after her for her dedication, uh, and desire to help a lot of these, uh, single mothers, I'm assuming, and, uh, different ones, uh, to be able to have an opportunity to get some sort of a career education, uh, as a, uh, as a, as a, as a mother, uh, and, uh, different women's rights, I'm assuming. Uh, and so with that, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, gave it a favorable, uh, recommendation. And so, uh, I guess, uh, with that, it states here, uh, whereas the, uh, whereas the Salisbury Plan Commission is powered under Indiana Code 36 dash seven dash four to make recommendation to the town council concerning the naming of streets and other public ways within corporate limits of the town of Salisbury. Whereas the commission has received and requested to name the road entering the Family Scholar House Development in honor of Dr. Sue Elperson, former Lieutenant Governor of Indiana and current president of Ivy Tech Community College, for her contribution. former Lieutenant Governor of Indiana and current president of Ivy Tech Community College for her contributions to education, workforce development, and community empowerment in, in Indiana. Whereas the commission held a duly noticed public meeting on a matter on the sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty-five, at which time the request was reviewed and discussed. Now therefore be resolved by the Sellersburg Plan Commission that hereby makes the following recommendations to the town, Sellersburg Town Council regarding the proposed name, road name. Favorable recommendation, the Plan Commission recommends that the road entering the Family Scholar House Development to be officially named Sue Elsperman Way. Adopted this sixteenth day of June, twenty twenty-five by Sellersburg Plan Commission. So.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Uh, I got a motion by Matt. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion?
Charlie, is this a town roadway? Or is this privately owned by?
This will be, uh, this is privately owned. Currently, the state police posts and all that stuff over there has a county road three eleven address. What Ivy Tech is trying to do is create a private roadway that is named, that they can then have the address reflect whatever number Sue Elsperman Way. So the, the police station would then have, the state police post would then have an address of Sue Elsperman Way. Scholar House would have Sue Elsperman Way.
But it's a private, we're not gonna maintain it, we're not gonna service it.
Correct.
It's their road.
It's their road.
Why do they need permission from us if it's their road?
Uh, it came down to the lealities from their attorney requesting direction from the Plan Commission on approval of the naming of that road as a road, even though it's private, and take it to the council.
Okay, well, that being said is, I understand that it's a private road, that affects my vote. Because my belief is why I appreciate Ivy Tech and the former lieutenant governor and all their contributions, I believe if it's a town road, it should be a local person who's done stuff for educate, that's my belief. So I would vote no for that. But if it's a private roadway, I don't really have any say in it. They can name it whatever they want. They can name it gold. But I'm for Sellersburg and not for a politician that comes down here once every, every six months looking for votes. I'm for people in this town, for names to be wrote, or roads to be named after, so. But I'll, I'll just abstain from the vote. That's the only conversation.
So in regards to what, uh, Councilman McBoy said, uh, I guess the only reason I'm, I'm a yay vote at, at this point is because the property was donated by Ivy Tech, is that correct, for the site of the building?
There was something with Ivy Tech, Sue Elsperman was a big part of that as to why the Scholar House is there on the site. I do know that, um, the sisters from, uh, Convent Ferdinand were involved in it as well.
Oh, now you tell them.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking, we don't have any.
I can go church on Saturday, Charles.
We don't have skin in it as far as.
We don't have any, no, again, this is coming down related to addressing more as they're wanting to honor Sue Elsperman with the naming of this entryway that is their private roadway, but it also is relating to addressing that's typically done when a property is developed, but Ivy Tech has already developed.
The project's great. It's all great.
Well, it's no more different than a developer put in a subdivision and they name it subdivision. Well, I know, but okay, let's say, uh, let's use Butler Road for example. Okay, that was, you know, we're gonna call it, sometimes it's a private road, sometimes it's a public road. So, I mean.
It's a public road.
When we went through and did, and came to all that nature.
Well, I, I, I get, again, like I said, I'm, I have no problem with it. I mean, again, I, I, I don't disagree with Councilman McBoy uh, on that, but again, this is an Ivy Tech matter. They need something to be able to, be able to issue addresses for twenty-four units at this moment in time. And that's the reason why I guess they're, and it is in Sellersburg, and I guess that's why they're asking.
Great project. All about it. It's their road, don't name it what they want. I just, my opinion is, if it was a public roadway, I'd be for local people. That's just how I think.
Got you. And I, and I feel the same way. So, okay, so we got a motion, we got a second, we had the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign nay? Thank you. Uh, no unfinished business. Uh, okay, we're on, we're on a roll on that, three meetings in a row. Okay, new business, Town Center easement acquisition, Mike Harris, JTL.
This has actually been tabled a couple times from the previous meetings. Uh, we have brought it up, we just didn't have the final numbers on it. Um, so this is for the, um, Town Center Sewer Project, um, easement acquisition for, I believe it's eighteen easements that are on there. Yeah, eighteen, eighteen different property owners. Similar to the one for Ivy Tech, the, uh, when you, when you look at end dot pricing for this, which is really the only kinda standard around, they're about twenty, they are right around twenty-five hundred dollars a parcel. We've reduced it down to two thousand dollars a parcel, um, for a total. So eighteen parcels, two thousand dollars a parcel. Um, thirty-six thousand dollars total. That's everything from beginning to end, um, contacting all the property owners, um, multiple, multiple meetings, um, all the notarized forms. Basically handing you all the documents at the end to be, um, to be recorded and have everything ready to go to be, to be bid out. And I've also, I've attached a list of the, um, affected property owners. And there's also a map that shows the, the layout of the sewers and where each of those easements falls, um, within the project area. So that, that, just to be clear, that does not necessarily mean that you are going to build all of that sewer immediately. But while you're, um, the idea was while you're getting easements, go ahead and get them all taken care of. So when you do decide to move forward with the rest of the, uh, wha- whatever amount of sewer you decide to build there, you have it ready to go.
Okay, so, um, each of these people have been, have they been talked to any of this?
Not yet. This is, once you give us the go-ahead, then we'll start talking.
You're wanting us to go on ahead and prove that, that we're, we're in favor of, of offering two thousand dollars.
No, 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 you're, you're, um, paying us two thousand dollars per parcel to go take care of everything for them. Right. This is, this is the same thing we did on Ivy Tech. Uh, if you're, I, I can't remember if that was last meeting or meeting before.
Right.
So this, this is an amendment to our contract to do the.
Yeah, I understand, but at, at the end of the day, are you, are, are these people, are we gonna ask them for anything or are they asking, we just go ask them to give us some easement, correct?
We would ask them to donate. It's, yeah, we would ask them to donate. It will greatly increase their property value.
Okay, all right. Everybody understand that? I just wanna make sure everybody, they, they all understood that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna make sure everybody was on board with that.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Does Zima have any questions on this?
He's looking at me.
Did you say everybody did?
So, so there's, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars, two thousand dollars a piece per address for, I guess it's eighteen parcels of property.
Correct, eighteen different parcels.
So, so basically, just so understand, if, don't catch it while I'm reading, you go to each property owner, uh, and you get two thousand dollars to consult with them.
No, no, we're, we're giving them two thousand dollars to go to each one of these property owners.
Yeah, J, JTL is going.
We, we have, we're just paying them to go do that job.
Right, and. So, when you said you take care of everything, so they're donating a piece of their property to the easement? Is that what you're?
They're, they're donating, what we would ask them is to donate an easement across their property for the sewer to be constructed within.
But at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, you won't actually see that because it's all underground.
Correct, that's correct.
You're so understanding.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Thank you, Mike. Right. I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second? Second by Scott. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sign nay? Motion approved. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, new policy, mandatory meetings, uh, and our training, we'll provide a discussed, uh, State Board of Accounts, uh, representative. So what we have here is that in the past, uh, we tried to, uh, either provide or, uh, don't give money from whether it's ourselves or from the town, uh, to the employees when they have these mandatory meetings. And it was the understanding that we was unable to, um, give meals, I guess, and things like that. So I guess we're asking to, uh, provide a new policy. So Charlie, you go on ahead.
So basically, um, I'll give you, for instance, we have some upcoming mandatory meetings for some of the civil staff related to, uh, confined space training. It's a two-day, all-day training that we're hosting here, uh, at Town Hall, the staff. Again, during those times, to provide lunch during the training, in order to be able to do that as municipality, you have to have a policy that covers that for State Board of Accounts. And that's basically what this is, is a policy that, that covers, uh, meals and refreshments at employee meetings. To be eligible, meeting must have documented education or business development purposes, funds not to be used for entertainment, such as social activities or parties. Such meetings where town employees are required to be hosted over lunch period due to length of the education, employee workshops, et cetera, and lunch and refreshment provided by town. Such meeting shall be approved by the town manager and/or the police chief. Meeting should not be hosted over lunch period at time of report, say, or lunch period is adequate for hosting meeting. Um, and there's guidelines, meeting must focus on education or business or actual event. Company documentation will submit a voucher to our treasurer, includes the agenda, topic discussion, meeting location, presenters, and roster of employees. And then meal and refreshment provided are to be reasonable in nature and not to see twenty dollars a person, though at all time. Pretty cutting your eyes.
So the two words that we need to hear is employee education that benefits the town.
Yeah, so for example, our intention is when we do the confined space training for water and sewer streets, we'll get Jimmy John's or.
Subway, Mike dirty mice, um, something local, yeah.
So anyway, again, to have a policy set forth that's signed on record, kept with the clerk treasurer's office, uh, the State Board of Accounts as well. And this is the policy that is.
So how many employees are typically at one of these training?
Depends on, depends on what it is. Um, so we don't host them too often, honestly. Probably start hosting them more. I'd like to get the guys ocean certified a lot of different ways. Confined space is the most obvious. Especially where you're related to sewer and water guys more than, than the streets and sanitation, but street sanitation does help out with water and sewer on, on certain things at times. So again, you know, accessing manholes and air levels and excavation and stuff of that nature, I said. So there's gonna be some ongoing training that we're working through, uh, the staff for safety purposes.
Twenty, twenty-four people roughly.
Yeah.
So the funds would, could. So, uh, so if it's different departments, does all the money, is it funded from one?
No, I think what we can do is cover.
Split it up?
We can split it.
Okay.
Like, you know, for example, if we have a specialty water, like the water team has ongoing C, C, CE stuff, you know, they're gonna pay for it.
Right.
So I mean, I think it, it allows that opportunity depending on what the situation is.
Right.
Okay, all right. Hold on. Thank Michelle Meg. After that, Michelle Miller, you good and everything? We good on your end? Good, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate everybody working together as a team and, uh, making everything work out on this, so.
I'm good with this, so I'll, uh, make a motion and approve it.
Okay, I got a motion by Matt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any final discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sign nay? Motion approved. Thank you. Uh, let's see, it's the collect business.
Table that one. I'm gonna ask you to table that one.
Okay, table number three.
I've got some clarification I need to get some.
All right. Uh, okay, uh, consultation, uh, Jacoby Two's Land Facility Analysis Work Order two zero two five dash zero one. In front of you, you have a, uh, work order, uh, based upon, uh, for, for twenty twenty-five. And I assume Mike Harris is gonna tell us a little bit about.
Redevelopment approved it, um, I don't know, month or so ago. Can you say what you said there? I'm trying to figure out why it's even on there.
Okay, so this is a redevelopment situation.
Yeah, re- redevelopment approved it.
Oh, okay, this is that. Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. At redevelopment meeting, uh, there was, uh, some discussion and concerns of we approved this at some point at the time and they, uh, became, uh, become on the hook, uh, uh, paying for it since it's the sewer project that it, that was all being done, uh, correct? Is this what this is about?
This was the, uh, facility condition assessment on the old school.
Correct. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the, sir, I'm sorry, yeah, to, on the school thing. And so since it was handed over to them and it was asked, uh, uh, by a couple of the members that we would go on ahead and, and pay this, uh, fee, uh, kinda took us away from it. So, uh, I think it was asked upon the redevelopment committee to allow each of us to know that, uh, they picked up something that some felt unfavorable of paying, uh, uh, due to the fact that we started the process, but we gave it over to them. So that's what this is all about. So. It takes no. Yeah, there's no vote or nothing like that. Yeah, it, it's, it's letting us know that they, uh, took something, uh, uh, without their knowledge, uh, to a certain extent, we'll say, and, uh, was asked to pay for this. Am I wrong with that, correct? So, yeah. Okay, all right. Uh, general comments from the public this evening? Okay, uh.
Before we go to.
Hey, Harris is already up there. You wanna do your stab report?
Absolutely, love to.
All right, um, Sunflower Valley Water, um, I think we told you that IFA approved moving forward with that, so we are knocking on doors. Um, if you get a call or a question, um, you can let them know that that's, that's legit, trying to get all those taken care of. Um, let's see, the LCRR project, um, that is the same, still reviewing the field data. Uh, US thirty-one, so we had the pre-bid meeting last week. Um, bids are due on the thirtieth, so that'll, that's the rebid. And that'll cover the, the water and the, um, and the sewer portion of that. Uh, the drinking water PER, so the list came out from, um, the state. They had a hundred and seven projects submitted. They are only funding nine of the one hundred and seven. Um, very small group this year. Um, I have a call with the IFA on Thursday to talk, and, and, uh, um, your project was not one of the, the nine of the, of the one hundred and seven. So, um, I've got a call with them on Thursday to find out what other options there are for you guys. So the, um, just as an example, the treatment plant actually wasn't in the fundable list. But they ended up, um, loaning you money just at a slightly different rate. So there may be other options. So I'll talk to them on Thursday, let you know what comes out of it. Uh, Town Center Sewer, we talked about that already. Thirty-one wastewater is the same. Uh, State Road sixty, the Forest Main relocation, they should be done in the next couple of weeks. Um, with that, um, Ivy Tech two pump station, um, really the only update is the, you all approved the in-lu fee payment last week. Michelle, uh, Miller noticed that they had issued that invoice to you. It was in your name specifically. So we're getting a change to say Town of Sellersburg to get that paid. Um, and then CCMG, um, the, I'm gonna go in reverse order, twenty twenty-five dash one, that was the very small project. Um, that one, if they're not done already, that one will be done July fourteenth. Are they done, Charlie? So they're already done with that one. Um, then twenty twenty-four dash two, that one scheduled to be done, uh, around the beginning of August. So moving forward on all that.
Yeah, they were just, they were just striping today over in.
Yeah.
Lakeside.
Yeah. They moved through pretty, pretty good.
Yeah. I think like I said, they've done, done a nice job over at Perry Crossing and, you know, again, talking about that, you know, again, that's, uh, the rest of the Perry Crossing project is, is, uh, is a county related and has been due at the town. So appreciate everybody's patience and understanding and willingness to, you know, uh, work around it. And, uh, so hopefully, uh, it'll get done sooner or later since the weather is cooperating with them as far as no, no rain other than unfortunately, there's a lot of heat, uh, right now. So, okay. All right. Anybody else have anything to Mike?
Appreciate your service, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Charlie?
Uh, first we'll go, uh, in your packet, you have a, uh, document for legal engagement representation letter from Sellersburg Plan Commission. Sign, uh, starts with Mr. Amos. Third page, you see it's signed and approved by the plan commission. He bring it to the council. This is for legal representation for the plan commission, BZA, and unsafe building commission, um, to retain, uh, our current attorney for those boards, uh, Alex Gaddis. I see a simple vote, uh, for that in the record, please.
No change in the rates or anything?
There's, yeah, there is an increase in the rates.
Yeah, there was a, uh, there was an increase, uh, with a deduction, with a twenty-five percent discount, uh, so Keegan Ogden, uh, Alex Gaddis, uh, primarily responsible of the current hour relate was four oh five. They was one provided twenty-five percent discount, which made it three oh three. Uh, the plan is in, is what is only in as well as BZA, uh, was sent in a, uh, one other, uh, two. But, uh, the closest one was a three hundred. Uh, and, uh, so the, uh, both boards agreed to go on ahead and keep the services of, uh, stole Keegan Ogden for the three dollars of, uh, increase. So that was it. So. All right, Wendy is just to be able to prove this for.
Yes.
I just asked for a motion to prove that.
So.
A motion by Scott. Do a second.
I'll second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign aye. Motion approved.
All right. Um, as Mike talked about paving, they're basically wrapping up at this point, doing finish up work with striping, uh, on thermoplastic. Um, I know they're on Perry Crossing today, uh, doing some of that. I know there were some of the neighbors and some of the stop bars as well. Um, in reference to the Perry Crossing project, it's not in the town. Um, the area of Perry Crossing between Autumn Ridge subdivision and State Road sixty will be closed for approximately three weeks. Um, due to roadway degradation under the base. Uh, when the county went to come in and pave their portion and do base repairs, um, they discovered that the road was a lot worse shape. So they're basically having to do a complete road reconstruction for a segment of Perry Crossing. Again, that's estimated to take up to three weeks. They're supposed to keep me noted and updated, uh, on the timeframe. So we can communicate, uh, appropriately on that. Um, yes, sir.
It was brought to my, I, I thought, I took about four hundred and seventeen phone calls and text messages since those signs went up. And what's happening is some people who come off of thirty-one and turn left on the Perry Crossing. I know this is all the county and we're just going to have to ask them if they can help us out. But they were wondering if we could put a sign on thirty-one before someone in a camper or something else turns down there and then has to go across Ebenezer Church or down Allentown, which could cause additional. If they were just aware of the closing, they would have went up to Memphis and came, you know, because they, they're not comfortable driving on that.
There are electronic reader boards on thirty-one before you get to Perry Crossing.
So before you turn left, there's notification that you cannot go all the way. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, we'd put up, when that had, the day it happened, I'd taken one of our reader board signs out and posted it. Uh, because at the same time, we'd already scheduled to close the entry cover bridge during the paving, rerepair portion. This happened, moved our sign down to thirty-one in Perry Crossing. And then the next day they showed up with their own signage out on thirty-one before you turn on to Perry Crossing.
I'd rather go that way. So if someone had mentioned two minutes, I'd rather look down.
Um, we're in the middle of an odor control pilot right now. Um, if you've gone by us high school since Thursday, you'll notice there's no odor at all. It's going very well. Um, so now we're looking through on what that's going to look like, um, to make that a permanent solution. Um, town is closed Friday, July fourth, an observation of independence day. Trash day for that day will be on July third. Uh, as a reminder, there is a fireworks celebration, um, at the American Legion. Town, so our town fireworks, uh, is at the American Legion sponsored by JTO Prime. Uh, they have food from eleven to nine. They have a gentleman by the name of Smoking Joe doing music on one porch from five to seven. You got the rumors coming on a different stage at six to nine and fireworks approximately nine forty-five on the, on the floor. So, um, hopefully be a good event. This Wednesday is food truck Wednesday, uh, here in town. So at the corner of New Albany and Uta Street for four to eight P M. We'll have, uh, three different food trucks out here, um, on the sidewalk on New Albany Street and we will have live music, not live music, we'll have DJed music by DJ Blue Suede. Um, a very nice young man. He likes to, uh, do his thing. He's a big Elvis fan. So DJ Blue Suede, will be here providing ambiance music in the background. So.
I gotta see this.
Yeah. Um, so DJ Tank, that's DJ Tank's son is who it is. So, uh, he's going to come and join us that day. So there's some picnic tables and stuff provided over there, shaded areas in the pavilion around some of the trees. You can bring a blanket. You know, have picnic, bring some chairs and there's some other picnic tables that are available, uh, for over there at Wilkes-Barre. So, um, it's very hot outside. I urge people to use caution with that. Um, but also the pool is open and it's busy. So it's being very well utilized this year. Um, so go ahead and see. Anybody have any questions?
No, sir. They were good.
So, uh, the Blue Suede guys, that's on Wednesday?
Yes.
This week.
Four a.
Wednesday, they're in a food trucks.
And the food truck starts at five?
Four P M.
And until eight?
Four to eight.
Okay.
Doing it in the evening.
All right.
We did it last year on camp run. Um, wasn't bad. And we tried to do it from, you know, during lunch and then through dinner. And then what ended up happening is all the food trucks would run out of food at four o'clock. So then we're eating food trucks for dinner time and it's like, you know, food trucks, they're not restaurants. So, um, it usually ended around six. So we got a lot of complaints about it's ending too early because I'm at work all day. I don't get a chance to do that. Need to do it later. Can't do it later. So it's like, okay. So after having a conversation with parks board, parks board decided, well, let's move it down here because now you have seating. You've got some area, um, down here, you know, um, do it in the evening time. Again, you can get it on your way home or you can come down here and just have dinner in the park.
And it is in the digital board, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I get it. I was just, you know, I'm just.
What time does the Blue Suede shoes guy, but?
Starts at five.
He starts at five on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
In the heat of the day, ninety-five degrees.
Heat in the evening. Okay. I can't control the weather.
I didn't know. I just, are you going?
Possibly, yes.
You may be, you know, you may, you may hearken back to the years.
I'm going to make every possible human effort to be there. Yes.
So we have, uh, Burt's provisions. Uh, we have Patriot pizza and cool treats.
Okay. I just want to see Randy and the Blue Suede shoes guy.
Okay. All right. Uh, chief? Thank you. Appreciate your presentation and, and your concerns tonight.
I always ask, is the town safe?
County's safe.
The police department staff?
Fully staffed.
You have all the equipment and stuff you need for now?
We're in good shape for now. I say that until we find out what happens to budget with this Senate bill.
So bill one's affecting a lot of communities. People need to be aware of that.
That is right.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Yep. Um, since you're going to have all kinds of time, boy, you're going to last tonight. Okay. Oh, Jake, I'm sorry. Jake. Yeah.
It's okay. It's okay. Thanks. Uh, first, uh, as you all know and are aware, we have recently appointed the redevelopment authority. Uh, been working real hard through the, uh, you know, the bond issuance that's going to be forthcoming. And because you all chose this manner, uh, you know, there are going to be lease payments with the TIF. There's no additional tax increase or rates or anything. So proper playing by you guys. Kudos. But with that, three member board, uh, we do not have them listed on our salary ordinance. Uh, there's been a lot of work over the last couple of months, but then once we get through this, the RDA will probably have to meet a few times a year. And so I spoke with the president, uh, Brad Amos, and also with, uh, Michelle Medcalf, who I believe spoke with Michelle Miller about trying to make sure that they're compensated for their time, just like any other board. Uh, but instead, uh, you know, they're not going to meet monthly after this is all done. So, uh, four or five hundred dollars is, uh, is, is, is there. It's appropriate. Will be paid for either out of the general fund or through set it, uh, but need a, a vote in either one of those capacities, four or five hundred dollars. It's there, whatever you think, yeah, is appropriate for them to be paid and compensated. They'll, you know, they'll have probably three, four, possibly five meetings a year, uh, after this.
Jake, is this board intact after this year? Is there something that's going to be?
It is. So they're, they're going to have other reporting requirements and things you're going to have to do with this bond. At which point, when, you know, there aren't any additional, uh, reporting requirements or any reason for them to be, uh, for them to meet, you can dissolve the board and therefore kind of back out this.
Okay.
You know, allotment of.
Kind, kind of at this time, uh, you know, like I said, we're, we're on this, now with this sewer project, we're on this, you know, we're moving up that steps, you know, to get it to the top. And so I think that we'll utilize these gentlemen the next two, three, four years possibly, maybe even longer. Uh, so, uh, you know, again, uh, they represent, uh, all three dis, you know, are, are all of our district areas. Uh, so, uh, I think that's a good thing, uh, at from the core of it. And, uh, so, uh, you know, again, uh, you know, Jake, he, he made this comment about it. And it's checked with everybody and I appreciate.
So what we'll do is if you all approve it, I'll bring back an amendment to the salary ordinance. We'll just add those three positions the same way there are for like redevelopment commission members and or the plan commission members and BCA board members. Um, so with this new board, you all appointed the three or the executive, uh, did, it's just compensating them for their time.
So they haven't been compensated up to this point?
They have not.
Okay. And this would be the total amount for the remainder of this year?
It's just going to be instead of each meeting, whereas some of the boards are paid, you know, twelve hundred dollars for the year. As of right now, we believe, you know, four or five meetings a year is, is what it's going to be. And then we'll make this retroactive to what they've already.
Right.
Done. We had a meeting last, uh, month. We had a meeting before this meeting, just trying to get all of our.
Okay.
Documents executed and notices out there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. So, um, I guess with that, I ask for a motion to, uh, you know, set an amount of four hundred dollars.
Whatever you want to put.
Four hundred dollars of each member. Huh? Well, that's what you want to say. And I got a motion by Matt for the amount of four fifty each. I have a second. Second by Scott. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sign aye. Motion approved. Thank you, Jake. Appreciate it.
Bring the salary ordinance and then back to catch, to catch up.
Okay.
Um, also a couple of weeks ago, uh, unfortunately there was a dog bite incident within our community. It was dogs on dogs, not dogs, uh, human or person. We need to set a hearing, uh, in order to kind of move forward. There's some, some administrative, uh, potential issues. Uh, everybody is afforded due process in this. So without going into it too much further here in a public meeting, we would need to set a special hearing for that. Uh, almost like a bench trial administratively. And so what I was thinking, and again, maybe look at your own schedules and let me know because it can be done during the day, just like normal court would be. Uh, next Wednesday, July second, uh, at nine A M. I don't know where we're at because the dog is currently being quarantined at JB Oval. And so the sooner the better in order to have this hearing. But again, uh, nine A M. I just need three.
Can you speak for ten o'clock, man? I don't miss this. That's where he trains.
Next Wednesday, July second.
I am. I'm checking my, I would love to be a part of this tribunal. I understand. I'm checking my schedule. Understand?
I mean, the whole board, if the whole board can make it, you can be here. I just need at least three for.
I can do Wednesday, but I have to be in Indianapolis by two forty-five. Do you think that this?
I don't think it takes any more than two hours.
I just don't know how much evidence is going to be presented. I don't.
I will, I will be efficient on my end in the case of chief. And then I don't know whether or not they're going to have a, um, their own attorney and or, but they, they can move forward processing. We'll, we'll be quick and efficient.
I'll be here. Okay.
So you said there, I guess there was a dog on dog incident. Um, I have a, is that what, is that what you said?
That is what I said.
And, and I went through this the past summer with a police report and I'm just going to ask the chief, and I think, uh, I know the answer to this. Is there a leash law in the town of Sellersburg?
There is.
Okay. Thank you.
So if everybody.
That all be addressed.
All right. So what we'll do, and Michelle Medcalf, I'll get with you and the chief to make sure we send out proper notice to make sure all parties know the, the date and time. And then we'll, we need to have probably many minutes of it, uh, like we did, yeah, that was seven or eight years ago, I think. Uh, the next thing I have to speak about, just more of an update, um, there was the eminent domain action, um, just on small easement moving forward. I finally was able to get a second appraiser willing to take this on since it's involving an easement, not just fee simple. And so just want to give you an update. We got to get those back before moving forward. So there was that update. Uh, the next update, uh, specific to the Home and Lane piece of property adjacent property owners. Uh, I did find we're able to, uh, potentially negotiate depending on the value with adjacent property owners. And, but what I'm asking for you all tonight would be to, uh, allow the town manager to be the disposing agent of that piece of property provided it meets Indiana code thirty-six, one dash eleven dash five. And I'll happily, happily walk, uh, the town manager through the process. But it's just underneath, if it's underneath a certain threshold, then we don't have to get a full loan appraisal to save the, uh, the town. If we look at it and it's above that threshold, then we have to go through the whole process.
I understand.
So I just need somebody to take a vote to allow.
Okay. I just asked for more. Okay. Got a motion by Matt. Do a second.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Same sign aye. Motion approved.
I have anything else.
Okay. Thank you, Jake. All right. You got a question for him? Okay.
Counselor, where are we after this building? One there's, or in, can you speak on that?
I can just tell you that it has been, uh, before the judge, waiting on a ruling since our hearing in January, I believe. What I think probably my next course of action will be is to just go ahead and generate a proposed order and submit it. It's kind of a polite nudge and it's not uncommon for it to take this long, but it is a polite nudge of just, here's our side. And I'm sure the other side will, once they see me, you know, enter our proposed order, then they will obviously put their proposed order. It may make, may make it a little quicker for, for the judge. Still understanding, still in the process and understanding the judge does have, uh, a large time.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else? Randy, you want to go first tonight?
Sure. Um, as always, I'm, uh, just super excited about fireworks this year and, uh, you know, uh, back, uh, three, four years ago, first year we didn't have them. I think the town board caught some heat for not having fireworks. And I think it was more, the onus was on some other thing. I think our dollars were there and we were going to help. But, uh, so in the last three years, and I believe it's been the last three years that we've found a sponsor and it's, uh, fireworks have, uh, been, uh, a success and great crowd. And, um, I think, uh, the town, and I believe the Legion benefits from it. And I think the town benefits from it. It's just kind of a win-win. And, uh, I'm really happy it worked out the way it did. I want to, uh, kind of give props to the, and I'm not sure who did it. I think, uh, one of the individuals with the, uh, street and sanitation department had a lot to do with the pool because, uh, um, as a liaison for the parks board, we were facing some stuff with the pool that, uh, could have been. Board, we were facing some stuff with the pool that could've been quite, quite expensive, and, you know, props to Charlie and this individual, I think they got us back in business at a really huge reduced rate, things are going well over there, I'd like to commend the Parks Board for, you know, what they're doing with the entertainment, different things, it just, I really think we got a good group of people there, and they, they seem to kind of know what they're doing, so, but anyway, I just, I wanna thank that those individuals with the street and sanitation, that this is above and beyond for them to step up and be able to share his knowledge and hard work and save the town a bucket of money. Pool's going good, it's busy, it's not just sitting there, I'm just taking Charlie's testimony, and I've rode, ridden by there a few times, and seems like people are really, you know, utilizing it this year, but past that, you know, check on somebody, welfare check on people, I know Scott probably will call me and see if I'm cool, because he, he likes to check on the older population, so I'm, and seriously though, it's, this is dangerous weather for a lot of people, and, you know, a lot of people don't have some of the, you know, not everybody has an air conditioner, so just keep that in mind, but at any rate, glad to serve here and glad to get, to be a part of what we have, and I think town's moving in a forward direction, and I'm, I'm proud to be a part of it, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Matt?
Yeah, just kinda piggybacking off of our older board member, but, you know, everybody needs to be safe with this, with these temperatures, I mean, it's very hot right now, I know that there probably is some organizations around, correct, that would help? Charlie? Is there any organizations that if some person within town is having some issues that they can reach out to? Cooling? Or going to get cool? Safe shelter?
There's places like the YMCA, the library, there's, there's places like that that will allow you to come in.
Yes, I mean, don't think that, you know, as a resident, that you don't have areas that you can leave your home to get cool in for a little period of time, because we do need to take it seriously, I mean, it, it can be life or death, and we want all of our residents to be safe, but I also wanna commend our, our Parks Department and what they're doing with the pool, and it's been awesome seeing the numbers of kids and, and parents going, enjoying the cool water to help with that too, so that's also another option that is available, so, but just wanted to thank everybody, all of our, our, our boards, I wanna thank this council, I wanna thank our town employees for all their hard work, especially in the heat, so, that's about it.
Okay, all right, thank you, you got yours and Mike first time?
Couple of things, I noticed it got noticeably hot over here when we were talking about the Ivy Tech property, and then someone mentioned the Franciscan order, and I was gonna vote no, and it, I have been sweating over here ever since, so, I wanna thank you guys for that, my air conditioner blower did go out over me last week, I didn't get any phone calls from you, so, a little disappointed, as much as I check out on you, I would like a little bit in return, it's a two-way street. I know Mary would've checked on me, but, you know, that's fine, a couple of things, congratulations to Providence for, they made it semi-state, they had a good, really good run this year, a lot of my kids in my district go to Providence, so I'm very happy to see them do well, and of course, I'm a baseball guy, so I, I take interest in that, the Senate Bill 1 was brought up by the chief, and I think that that's something that should be on our radars moving forward, and the legislation passed by our lawmakers, elected lawmakers and officials in Indianapolis, that's going to affect a lot of communities in 2028, we're near there, so I think it'd be beneficial for us to look at our finances and what the potential impacts may be to the town, you know, as far as the services and incoming revenue that we provide, the services we provide based off the incoming revenue that we have, when I say incoming revenue, meaning our taxpayers, no one wants to see taxes go up, I am definitely not in favor of that, but we also have to provide services, we have to pay police officers, we have to get streets cleared, we have to get trash picked up, we have things that we have to pay for, and if you don't have money to pay for it, then you have to cancel some of those things, and I don't wanna be a councilman up here having to potentially lay off a worker in the town, not to cause any alarm, but if we're not looking at these things for the future, again, I'm very, I, I will say publicly, I'm very disappointed that they passed that version of that bill, I hope that they look at it and understand the effects that it's going, we're just a small town, there's municipalities that are losing 50, 60 million dollars, I don't know what they're gonna do, so, but I, I think it is something that we, we look at and, and begin to meet on and make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed for the future, because if you're not planning for the future, you're gonna fail. Then the last thing, I know I have a lot of military members in my district, I know times are uncertain right now, so I wish them all Godspeed and, and be safe, it's a, it's a crazy, crazy world out there, but this has been a talent, it's always supported its service members, and I wanna make sure that we acknowledge them and their sacrifices and their family sacrifice for keeping our, our country safe, regardless of your political view, they don't have a choice in the matter, they just follow directions and orders, so I wanna see all them return home safe to, to this great town, so other than that, it's just, it'll be a little hot, you'll be okay Randy, you, you need to cool off, I got a spot in my basement for you, I'm 100. Then you don't have to deal with solicitors.
Yeah, that's right, so appreciate all that, again, just like everyone said, please, you know, be careful out there, it is hot, so, and check on your neighbors, check on folks that you most, most of the times aren't, gonna consider or think of, but it's, it's good to at least, we should stop by or make sure they're outside, you know, and then if they are, you know, tell them to kinda get back inside and, and, and take care of themselves if the case is, so, some people are a little stubborn, so, again, thanks for what they've got going on with the park thing up here at Wolf's Park, I've been a big fan of hoping to do a lot more different things, I hope we have some, Charlie and I talked earlier about some music opportunities that we have coming in, I know they had the, the 100-year anniversary alumni thing up at the school, so I hope all the folks, I think they had over 370 people in attendance, I think that was, you know, a, a nice evening, I believe that a lot of them was able to enjoy, so, again, I thank all of our police officers and our employees and everything they do, and I hope all of our employees consider, you know, staying hydrated and, and being smart and, and working as a team and, and working together, so, again, it looks like all of our paving's pretty much done, and I think, you know, this is exciting thing for us as a community, our whole town has pretty much been paved in five years, and just like Scott mentioned, you know, with this Senate bill, you don't know, so for us to be able to get this done, it kinda does help us, so, I know we've had a discussion on, you know, some rate increases and things like that, and, you know, so, please take in mind, you know, we are preparing for the future of this community, when we first took office in here, you know, we was, our hands were tied in a lot of ways, and, and we was able to get the resources back up, so, please understand what we have to be able to do as a community as a whole, so, I appreciate the folks in attendance tonight for coming here and expressing some of your thoughts and concerns, and we will, you know, do our best to take care of them the best that we can, so, again, I thank JTO and Prime for the, 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 the nice contribution to the fireworks, and I'm looking forward for, you know, the American Legion on a Friday, so, I have nothing else to say, Michelle, do you have anything to add tonight? Yes. Okay. Hey, perfect. Perfect. Okay, all right, thank you, thank you very much for you and, and what you and Robin gotten ready for all that, the budget thing seems to work very well, you know, it was a learning experience, and, but we appreciate your all's desire to take it forward, so, okay, Michelle, Cap, you have anything else? Okay, all right.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, all right, I got a motion by Matt, do a second? Second by Scott, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
At 7:41.
Mr. Harris, is there gonna be a private box at the fireworks show for me to view the fireworks?